Regular Board Meeting Number Six, Thursday, February 16, 2023. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Anthony?
Yeah. I would like to ask for a moment of silence on behalf of the legendary football coach of Cardinal Mooney, who won four state titles, Mr. Don Bucci. A moment of silence because of his passing on his behalf and his family.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, welcome. Look at those pretty faces up on the screen looking at us. Hi Karen. Hi Linda. Hi Audrey. Who's that guy up in the right? I'm gonna send him a comb. I wish I had, I wish I all had all this hair, but I'm sending him a comb.
Hi Dave. I'm just home here, don't worry.
I'm just jealous, Alex. I'm just jealous of all that hair. Okay. All right, we'd like to open the meeting up. Public comments, if anyone has anything they'd like to say. You have some come to the podium, give them three minutes.
I'm here again, Diane Nemeth from Coatesville Township, 329 South Hubbard Road, representing Coatesville Township residents and the member, I'm a member of the Williams Homes McGuffey Historical Society. We're here today to encourage a resolution for ODNR to take ownership of that McGuffey Wildlife Preserve. Thereby, this will promote as a state park tourism. It'll bring economic development and prestige to our area and prevent bad publicity for a moral obligation that we have to maintain that property for future generations and the present generation and also for the wildlife. And I don't quite understand how all the monies can always go to the well-developed areas and not for the impoverished areas. Who can be against that resolution and have this moral obligation? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, I'm Richard Scarsala, 744 Atwood Circle Boardman. I'm the chairman of the Williams Homes McGuffey Historical Society. As you know, we donated the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve, 73 acres, a national historic landmark, to Mill Creek Metro Parks in 1998. Unfortunately, the park would appear to be disinvesting in selected parts of the county and the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve caters to people in Coatesville, Camel, in Youngstown, Eastside. These are moderate to low-income people that have relied on the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve pond and dock for generations. Unfortunately, the park has not done routine maintenance. They claim the pond is being reclaimed by nature, but actually, without raking leaves every year, any pond would disappear. So I see on the agenda there is some type of a resolution from the commissioners. I hope it would reflect our concerns and our hope that the Ohio Department of Natural Resources would be able to secure ownership of the preserve and turn it into a state nature preserve or co-manage it with Mill Creek Park as a state nature preserve. We feel that anything ODNR would do at this point would be better than having a neglected facility and having another state nature site here in the valley would bring ODNR dollars back to the valley, to bring your taxpayers' money back to the valley. There are so many other ODNR sites elsewhere in the state. We only have one. And this is a national historic landmark. It certainly deserves better treatment than it has received. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of Board Meeting Number Five, Thursday, February 9, 2023. Approval of bills for payment. Do you have a motion? No, move. Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Advertisement for bids, Sheriff.
Yes, bids for the sheriff's office who serves for inmates for the Mahoney County Justice Center.
I thought you did the cooking, Joe.
I do. Just a little my day off and you can get somebody.
All right. Motion.
Motion to approve advertisement for bids, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Legal notice, sanitary.
Morning, everybody. Number one's a request for a statement of qualifications for professional and maintenance services for instrumentation systems that we have throughout the sanitary engineering departments, wastewater treatment plants, pump stations, water facilities and other related equipment.
All right, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, legal notice, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, journal entry, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes. Yes. Agreements, convention and visitors, Linda.
Good morning, everyone. Letter A is an agreement with Gateways on Display, doing business as Pennsylvania on Display. This is for our 2023 literature distribution agreement. Along the Pennsylvania Turnpike Service plazas, we place our travel guides there for visitors to pick up. And letter B is an agreement with CTM Media. The same type of thing, literature distribution through several routes, including Northeast Ohio attractions, such as the Pro Football Hall of Fame, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, those type, Cleveland Aquarium, those types of places where travelers are, Cleveland Akron Canton Hotels, Ohio's Amish Country. And this agreement also includes placement of an ad in the Northeast Ohio Visitors Map as well as a presence on 11 touchscreen explorer boards spread out throughout Northeast Ohio where travelers can get information on visiting Youngstown and Mahoney County. That contract is a total of $13,350, non-general.
Thank you, Linda. Hopefully, it's the people coming back to Ohio, from Ohio, that stop and get those. Most of the PA people can't read.
We love our Pennsylvania visitors, David.
We have to keep those Steeler fans at home. All right, EMA, C. Jim, you want to handle that?
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement of Avalon R V for recourse to the Moone Mobile Command Post, 4,072.33, non-general. Quotations were obtained and they're the ones that could repair it.
Thanks, Joe. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter D is an agreement with Galaxy Industrial Services. This is for the purchase of real property needed for the Western Reserve Road widening project from Market to South Avenue in the amount of $4,600, non-general funds. And letter E is an agreement with Wayne Hall also for the purchase of real property needed for the Western Reserve Road widening project from Market to South Avenue in the amount of $5,750, non-general funds.
Thanks, Pat. Lead based.
Good morning, Commissioners. F is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction and that has control and healthy homes work at 356 East Judson, in the amount of $31,550. That's non-general and also in conjunction with the city of Youngstown CMBG program. And G is an agreement with Talon Company LLC and that has a control and healthy homes work at 75 Broadway. It's actually a duplex, so it's two for one there. $36,986.75, also non-general.
Thank you. Recycling. Lou.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H, our drop-off lease agreements with these three respective communities for 2023.
Excellent. Sanitary.
Commissioners, letter I is an agreement with Joe Dickey Electric for current safe electrical preventative maintenance on various equipment at the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $23,445 for three years. These are non-general funds. Letter J is an agreement with Utility Contracting for sewer repairs on Jonathan Lane in the estimated amount of $13,520, also non-general funds. And letter K is an agreement with Ruzik Excavating for emergency sanitary sewer repair and bypass pumping at Briarwood Court in the estimated amount of $9,675, non-general funds.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Motion on agreements.
Motion approved agreements, A through K.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders. EMA, 911.
This is a change order, none with Michael Baker International for GIS 911 data services in a decreased amount of $4,398.37. They work with our 911 department in order to keep our mapping and stuff up to date.
Okay, thank you. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter B is change order number one and final with Lindy Paving for the South Avenue resurfacing Phase Two project, which resulted in a decrease amount of $45,838.13, non-general funds.
Thank you. Lead based.
Letter C is a change order, number one, two, and three, with American Pinnacle Construction for additional chip home repair work at 120, home rehab work at 122 Crete Street in the amount of $5,310, non-general.
Thanks. Change orders.
Motion approved change orders, A, B, and C.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions, auditor's data. Alex.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Okay, so this item A, resolution of necessity to purchase supplies, hardware, software, materials, parts and services from Pro Tech Security through the GSA Federal and Ohio State Term Contracts in excess of the 50,000 threshold to be used by all county departments.
B, Commissioners, L M B.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to approve the agreement and expenditures with the following township, funded by the American Rescue Plan. This is Coatesville Township. This is additions and things are making to their fire station for their contamination area and for their restaurants in that area to better serve and make sure that everyone's properly sanitized. Item C is a resolution in support of a partnership between the Williams Home McGuffey Historical Society and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. It is in partnership and requesting an agreement between Williams Homes McGuffey Historical Society, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and the Mill Creek Metropolitan Park Districts. This is per information we've received from the Historical Society in order to encourage the groups coming together.
Participation.
And item D is a resolution to provide additional funding from the General Fund to the Mahoney Valley Law Enforcement Task Force Fund in the amount of $180,000. This is for operations and also for where they're will eventually be housed and located.
Okay, engineers.
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution approving the following individuals to serve on the Mahoney County Transportation Improvement District Board of Trustees for two years. We have David C. Ditzler, Mahoney County Commissioner, Patrick T. Janetti, Mahoney County Engineer, Ralph Meacham, Mahoney County Auditor, James Kinnick, the Executive Director of Eastgate, and Joe Muccio from the Sanitary Engineering Department.
Thanks, Pat. Facilities.
Morning, Commissioners. F is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of $418.80 to Monitronics International, doing business as Brink Security for alarm monitoring services at 825 Bevro.
Excellent. Thank you. Human resources. Karen.
This is a resolution to authorize Medical Mutual of Ohio to use specific information to the auditor of state for the county's audit.
Thank you, Karen. Lead based.
H is a moral obligation payment for several change orders that were in excess of 10%. We spoke about the last meeting. And I is a moral obligation payment of $4,467 to Thompson Mechanical for emergency furnace replacement at 71 Campbell. That's the last $500 of our chip grant repair program and the rest was funded by Campbell Programming.
Okay, thanks. Sanitary.
Commissioners, letter J is a resolution to reject the only bid received on April 6 of 2022. Record of bids, resolution 22-04-011. This was for the industrial bulk liquid oxygen delivered to the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Okay, Sheriff's, L M B grants.
Commissioners, this resolution is in support of an application to the Ohio Attorney General's Office for fiscal year 2019 through 2022, the Ohio Law Office for Body Armor Program, and it's in the amount of $11,833.50. They're looking at $2,958.40.
Thanks, Joe. Motion approved resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, A through K.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Bagetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. All right, relatively painless. Call for the good of the order. Is there any good, is there any order? Nancy, what do you think? There's no good or no order? Troy, I see you back there in the corner. Anything you'd like to talk to us about? Troy Rhodes, he does a great job on our behalf. Trouble shooting.
Troy Rhodes of Ohio Edison. Just wanted to come to the meeting, see if there were any issues that the county had with Ohio Edison in the area. We'll let you know that last month, I believe, we sent a email note out to the Commissioners, just letting you know about the different opportunities for those people that may be looking for funding to help pay for their electric bills. There's a number of agencies that those people can go to to look for that type of support from that. And also, last week, we sent an email note out to everybody talking about Valentine's Day and the risks of aluminum balloons and just the danger that those cause in our electric lines out there. We know that balloons seem to be a source of celebration or a memorial out there for those reasons, so they let them off into the air. We just strongly recommend that you find another means of doing that. Those aluminum balloons get into our electric lines and cause outage and cause other kind of issues out there. So we just try to bring that awareness to the people out there. The other thing is, is just to let you know throughout the spring and the summer, we'll be doing vegetation maintenance out there on trees, making sure we're trying to keep those trees away from our electric lines. I know that's always a sensitive topic to people out there in the community. And that's all, if there's any questions for me.
Yeah, I know we had a lot of wind the other night. You know, I was a little worried about that because it was, it was strong.
We did well.
Yeah, I didn't see many issues at all.
You know, last year about this time was, I was here and we were talking about the issues out in the hospital town.
Yeah.
And we've overcome those, hopefully.
Yeah.
Mother Nature stays on our side and cars aren't attracted to telephone poles. We'll do some, so I think that's a big challenge out there to get over.
You guys have a tough job and you do a great job at it.
I will tell you, it's the Christmas Eve, the minus 35 degree. Whether those union guys, those linemen out there in minus 25 degree weather, in half hour on. It was an incredible thing in two and a half days to, just in our area in the Mahoney County, we had about 5,000 people without power, but nobody was out of power for an extended long period of time. Those, those men and women out there on the field did a phenomenal job. So everybody had a good Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. Do they call Ohio Edison for the treatment? For the trees on the power lines or?
I mean, your best bet is to go through the contact center to report any kind of trees on lines. Now, remind you, as I've spoke about this before, lines on, or trees on electric lines, not trees on telephone lines, not trees on communication lines, but trees on electric lines, we will take care of and maintain those. The other utilities have that responsibility to maintain that. You can call that same number if you need to report a streetlight that is out. Best way on those streetlights is, is typically there is a pole number on there or the nearest address to that, that streetlight. And as always, to help the linemen out there replace those is to tie a ribbon around that tree or that pole in question so they know exactly where that light is out because typically they replace those during the daylight hours.
I never thought of that. Great idea. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
Oh, no, just, again, you know, Don Bucci, the passing of Don. He was just, really just a great, great person. He had an infectious smile. You could talk to the players that had him as a coach or as a teacher and every story is the same. And he was just a wonderful man. I've known his family. My old boss, Jim Traficant, him were very tight. Don would come visit Jim quite often when I was a young man there in the office and I loved hearing the football stories. And you want to talk about a person that believed in his valley and who was born and bred here was Don Bucci. And he raised generations of gentlemen and ladies in a sports dynasty that it's unrivaled for what he's done.
Didn't Traficanti go to, or Traficant go to Mooney?
Yes, yeah. He was the first quarterback, 1959, for Cardinal Mooney. And, yeah. And if you would hear, I mean, you'd love it. You'd hear those two guys sit and talk. It was unbelievable. I wish I would have had a tape recorder back in the day. That's how they were. But on another note, say a prayer for the mayor and the residents of East Palestine. I watched that on the, on the news, Trent Conaway, the mayor. I saw so many media standing around him. He looked overwhelmed. Fish are dying, animals are dying down there. Our hazmat teams continue to provide support. I know the mayor is requesting more help on behalf of the federal government. I think the next step, if the local resources start drying up, that President Biden needs to call in FEMA. That would most likely be the last step. People are afraid to death. And what we don't want to see happen down there is a nuclear winter like a Chernobyl, that people just refuse to come back there because these illnesses become more pervasive. People are not feeling well. I mean, if you looked at that plume, it looked like a nuclear bomb went off and it did not move for quite a while. And I just see those residents asking for help. So I'd just like to say, you know, prayers to the mayor, the council and all those people down there who are suffering. They have farms, they have homes, the schools, the children and the animals. It's, it's really sad. Something does need to be done and I know everybody's trying their best. So, and then all these shootings that we're having. I just want to say a prayer for this country that I've never seen it so bad and so crazy. What is going on? Now we're shooting UFOs down, shooting balloons. Nobody knows what they hit. Even though they can identify it as an unmanned object, well, if it's unmanned, then you have to know what it is. And now all of a sudden, all of these things are happening. It's kind of crazy. 30,000 people killed in that earthquake in Turkey and Syria. Start reading Revelations, folks. It's getting a little nuts. But other than that, thank you. Oh, one more thing.
One bit.
For the McGuffey. Here's your resolution. Thank you for all of your persistence and getting it done.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know, I just want to echo that. Don Bucci was a good guy. I knew him, my brother played for Ursulon and they played against Mooney. And he always told my father, Bobby should come to Mooney. But, you know, we stayed at Ursulon. But he was a good guy. His family's a great, great family. I think, aren't they from Poland?
Yeah.
Now they're from Poland.
And he lives in Poland.
Yeah, I thought so.
They're in the Bay area in Riverside.
Right, I thought so. I do echo the craziness that's going on in the country. And I, I mean, we're not a national group here. We're a county-elected group. But it's guns is what it is. I'm not saying we shouldn't have guns and people should be able to buy them and have go hunting or whatever they're going to do. But we need to put, we need to, like, abide by the rules that are in place. You know, we need to look at background checks like they always did years ago. I mean, what we're doing is we're giving people the ability to get them. I mean, and I never knew you could do this, but you can buy them online and put them together. What do they call those, ghost guns or something? I mean, that's crazy to sell that. And who gets them? These young kids are getting this. I mean, and, and mental illness, and I continue to say this, has a lot to do with what's happening in our country today with this, with the guns. Mental illness. And the sad part is when they closed all the facilities in this country that would help that. And where do they go? The jail. That's not the place for them. But we need to do something because this is getting to be awful. When you, you can't even send your kids to college. I mean, I'd be scared to death to send my child to college today. I mean, God only knows. And you can't say arm yourself because what are we going to do? Have everybody go to school with guns? I mean, when you get a great, a great school person, and this happened here in Mahoney County, a grade school person in third grade going to school with a loaded gun, where are they getting this? And why aren't they locking these up? The what, six-year-old that shot his teacher? Yeah, I mean, this craziness, terrible. I mean, we need to, we need to really look at what we find to be offensive and hurtful to our families and people. And, and government needs to step in here. This is not a political issue. This is not a Democrat issue, a Republican issue. This is a people issue. So I wish they would get out of that and go and sit together and try to work this out. I'm going to, this is horrible because that's all you're seeing. People killing everybody. It's ridiculous. And we need to, we need to stop. It needs to stop. You know, I understand hunting and all this and I have family that does it. You know, my whole family hunts, the whole nine yards. But there's, there needs to be some restrictions placed on what we do and how we do it and how, like the old days where you'd go in, you'd have to get a background check, find out if you had any offenses, if you were stable. And then maybe things will change, hopefully. But I, I didn't realize you can buy these guns and put them together. I mean, that's craziness. Anyway, I'm done. Have a nice weekend, enjoy yourself. We don't know what the weather's going to be like. Well, I would agree with my colleagues, the East Palestine situation. I think it's going to be a lot of years before we really know the effect that things had on people, that this situation has had on people's health. I know, Jim, how many years did it take for them to decide Agent Orange wasn't the right thing to do? You know, in Vietnam, that affected all of the soldiers over there.
It's still going on. Over 6,000 veterans have died for Agent Orange.
Yep, so I think it's going to take, I think it's going to take a long time
Yep, so I think it's going to take, I think it's going to take a long time before we, you know, we realize the impact. I know I see a lot of the talk about, you know, fish died and the one guy has a farm with fox on it. And he had like 26 fox in his, in his pens outside and every, I think several have died and every one of them has, you know, illnesses that, you know, they're lethargic and, you know, they're, he's taking them all to the vets and different things, but you know, just think what it's going to do on people. I, I had a person that lived, he said he was 23 miles north of the, of East Palestine. He said that he, they were out taking a walk and, and they could smell it from there when it first happened. And he told me that he hasn't gotten over it yet. And I, I thought it was a little, you know, kind of strange, you know, how far north he was, but hey, we, we don't know. We just don't know what travels and what happens and what impact and what effect it has on people and, and, you know, so I'm sure that, you know, as time goes on, we'll find out more and more of what we didn't do, what we should have done and what happened and what impacted it will. And hopefully it won't, like Anthony said, turn into a situation like where people stay away and, and continue to get sick and, you know, develop illnesses over the years. But just on a, on kind of a strange note, you know, I, I have to, I have to vent my frustration on this thing. You know, I, I have this and, and, you know, and it kind of, I didn't really, you know, we, we all park everywhere downtown and I know our, our poor Bob Bush isn't here anymore for me to make fun of on his parking tickets. But, so I, I get a letter in the mail from municipal court of Youngstown, Sarah Brown, Clark, Clerk of Courts. I guess because she's not running for reelection, she can send these out now. So Sarah, I love Sarah to death. She's a very good friend of mine. I'm going to, I'm going to give her a knuckle sandwich when I see her. But I get this letter in the mail and it said, our records indicate you have several unpaid parking tickets. Ohio license plate AN18GU. You know, please be advised that, you know, there, there are two at $30 apiece and they're going up to $50 apiece effective on February 15th, 2023. So, you know, I drive an old pickup truck and I have an old Ford Taurus. And, you know, I, we all used to know our, I mean, maybe everyone else does now, but I don't know my license plate number, right? So I walk out in the driveway and I look at my truck, I look at my car, I go, that's, that's not my plate number. And then I call my wife up at work and I said, hey, do you know your plate number? No. I said, walk out, look at, tell me what's your plate number. That's not my plate number. So I said, okay. I said, well, they sent me this letter. It's, it's not my plate number. I don't have this AN18GU. So at the bottom it says Parking Violations Bureau. So I called the Parking Violations Bureau. And they, they said, do you have a case number? I said, yeah, I got this letter with two case numbers on it. I give her the case numbers and they said, this is a, a 19, I don't know, 80-some Pontiac. And the ticket was given on March the 31st, 2004. And I said, 2004? And, and I said, that's, that's, that's 18 years ago.
A little later, aren't you?
18 years ago. And, and she said, oh, yeah, you know, and the other one's from 2005. And, and they were a Pontiac and I don't remember having that car. But I, but I could have maybe, I don't know. Was it my wife's or my mother's, you know, or something that was in my name? And I said, well, what if I disagree with this? I don't, I don't even think I had a car that was like that or that year. And she said, well, you can come down and get a form and file a, a reg, a complaint that says, or a dispute form. And I said, well, can I print it online? And no. I said, well, can you mail me one? No. And she says, we've never done that. And I said, well, because you've never done it, does that mean you can't do it? And, and I said, no. And they said, just realize, and I said, well, why all of a sudden did I get this from 18 years ago? Oh, we just now have secured the ability to put the block on. And I'm thinking, put the block on. You know, now I'm, now I'm visualizing them putting one of those big yellow things on my tire, right? The boot, put the block on. And I said, I don't know what, I don't know what you mean. What do you mean, put the block on? Oh, so we have you blocked that you can't get a sticker for any vehicle you own. You can't buy a car, you can't transfer a car, you can't do anything. Because now, until you pay this 18-year-old ticket, the block is on, so you're precluded from doing anything.
Yeah, but what if it's not?
And I, and I said, the block's on until you prove it ain't you.
Isn't there such limitations?
That was the first thing I thought of. And I, and the, you know, the poor young girl is trying to, you know, ask her questions and I'm sure that it was like, you know, somebody that, that they, that answers the phone like in our office and, you know, they yell about something happened that Audrey did over at JFS. But anyway, I just thought to myself, ain't that something? But you know, it was the 15th, right? So I thought.
It was yesterday, buddy.
No, this was yesterday when I called. So, so it says the 15th, it's going up to 50 bucks. So I thought to myself, you know, one time I got a ticket from Chicago that said I didn't pay an 80 cent toll. And, and I thought, I wasn't in Chicago. I'm not paying this. I threw it away. Comes back. It was, it, it, long story short, it went from 80 cents to $400.
Oh, no.
My God, $400. I had to get an attorney. I had to pay him 250 bucks and I thought to myself, I should have sent the darn 80 cents in, you know, whether it was mine or not, just to, just to eliminate the problem. So it was the 15th, it was yesterday and it was like 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I thought they probably close at four. I'm going to, I'm going to get online and pay the damn thing so I, so I don't get it piling up to, it's going to be 100 or 60 dollars each, you know, in, in, in one more day. So I got online, plugged in my credit card. Then they charged me four bucks for using a credit card online, you know, so I thought, holy Moses, but anyway.
That's what a lot of people do with that.
That's, so anyway, that's, that's my venting for today, among a lot of other things that I vent on.
Did it go through?
Yeah, I paid, I paid for them both. And I kept looking at the clock too. And, and you know what I did when it said approved? You know, I put my watch up and I screen printed the, the darn, the darn, the darn screen to show that it was before 4 o'clock because then they'll probably say, oh, well, it wasn't received in time, you know? Anyway. I don't know. They answered the phone till, till when I called, so anyway. All right, well, that's all I have, so. Everybody have a great weekend. Take care. Stay safe. Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler? Ditzler?
Our next meeting is? When's our next meeting?
Yeah.
Thursday, February 22nd, 10:00 AM.
All right.